Welcome to Shenite's Pickwa City Commission Meeting. For Tuesday, December 12, 2023. At this time, I would like to make a motion that we adjourn from executive session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
Call the roll. Just gotta call the roll.
Commissioner, Mayor Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Great. At this time, we'll move on to a presentation by Michelle Perry about our community garden.
Hello.
Hello. I'm Michelle Perry, 745 South Downing Street.
I'm Pat Kleiman, 745 South Downing Street.
We are the owners of Lineage Lane, and for the 2023 season, you all leased us space at Pitsenberger Park to grow specialty cut flowers and to incubate our new business. So I just wanted to give you, we wanted to give you, a brief update as you all consider the lease for 2024. So this is the space. Some of you have seen it when it was in full growth. It's just, it's the fence, the wood fenced area at Pitsenberger Park. And you can see there are pumpkin patches and zinnias growing just under a sixth of an acre. And we utilize that entire space as well as the shed that is there onsite and the tiller and the tools that are available in the shed. So as you might recall, we had a little bit of a late start for growing, but we made it work by growing all annuals, direct seed, with one exception, which I will talk about. We founded our LLC and we executed the lease agreement with the city in May. We planted our first secessions, and by July, we had blooms and we made our first sales. And we also planted further secessions so that we could have things continuing to be fresh and coming on new. In October, we made our final sales and began preparing beds for winter, as you understand, at home. Once the frost hits, that's the end of the growing season, until we have a greenhouse or something of that nature. So what did we grow? We had 35 varieties of flowers and greenery, and we also had two varieties of pumpkins. They're about six to eight pound sized pumpkins, white and orange. We had multiple secessions of many of those so that we could continue to have fresh flowers coming on, with the exceptions of snapdragons, which we grew from nursery plants. All were direct seed annuals, so we just put the seeds straight in the ground, mainly because we were starting kind of late. We made sure that we had short growing season annuals so that we could have those in time for midsummer sales. So we exceeded our sales goal. It was, was a pretty meager sales goal, but I was pretty excited. We passed that up after two weeks. Our florist community was amazing. About 65% of our sales were to florists. The remainder were retail sales. Some of those were bulk flowers by the bucket, and some had design work where they, you know, we put together a vase of flowers around a color scheme that they wanted or a kind of feel that they were looking for, so. We did have some that didn't sell, or we had an over an abundance, particularly sunflowers. So we donated those. There you can see a donation that we did to the Rehabilitation Center for Neurological Development, as well as to Ohio's Hospice of Miami County, so that we could spread some cheer with those blooms and don't let them go to waste. But we also left plenty in the garden for our pollinator friends. They were very happy. We got to see some pretty neat varieties of butterflies and moths and lots and lots and lots of bees. We're very grateful for the, the way that our new business has been received. Florists and retail customers have been over the moon, excited about having locally grown flowers. A lot of flowers that are sold through florists are flown in 2,000 miles plus away, and we were able to deliver them less than two miles down the road. That's pretty cool. And people recognize that, we're excited about it. We heard from our florists that customers were so excited to know that they were having sunflowers and zinnias and things that were grown right in their own community, so. We just appreciate you very much as we incubated our small business, you know, kept a lot of those dollars here circulating right here in Pickwa, Miami County. So, and there's a photo of some of you when you came to visit the garden in August, and we appreciate you checking it out. So that's our, our brief recap of how the season went. We are looking forward to, to season two. We have a lot of people asking already when we'll have flowers. We're in the planning stages now, and so happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I'm excited to hear. I didn't realize that you were, you were selling to local florists. I did not realize that. That's wonderful. Very similar to what Britt Decker's doing with the lettuce and things like that, too, so, nice.
That's right. So we could take, we sell by the bunch to florists typically, and so a bunch is between five and 10 flowers, depending on the variety. And so we sell by the bunch. We do wholesale pricing for them, so it's, it's more affordable than retail. And of course, then, we, we don't charge tax. They charge the end user the tax. It's been a great, great partnership. We had five florists in the area that we sold to.
Wow, nice.
That's great.
Where do you, where do you see things going from here? Is this space that you use gonna have to change, get bigger or smaller?
So the space that's in the fenced area is actually plenty for what we are able to do timewise on top of our full-time positions. And it's, it's been great because we, we've had space to trial things, see how it worked, do different treatments. Pat is an expert with fertilizer and different treatments for the plants, and so it gave us a lot of space to do that. We know now, more so what works, so I think we would go bigger, but we'll probably double down on some of those, those, those flowers that people really love, the sunflowers. People love Cosmos, snapdragons. We will go tenfold on snapdragons next year, I tell ya.
I'm just glad the space is getting some use, and it's good to know that Pat's full of it.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent agenda, approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes from the December 5, 2023 Regular City Commission Meeting.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There's, there's one more thing on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Do you want me to read that separately, or?
Yes.
A resolution appointing a member to the utility board.
Okay. And this is Rhett Desick, I probably messed up his last name, has applied as a member of the utility board for a three-year term that is going to expire on March 1, 2026, or until his successor is confirmed and qualified. He is filling the position of Chris Grissom on that utility board. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to approve Rhett on the utility board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
There's, there's one more thing on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Do you want me to read that separately, or?
Yes.
A resolution appointing a member to the utility board.
Okay. And this is Rhett Desick, I probably messed up his last name, has applied as a member of the utility board for a three-year term that is going to expire on March 1, 2026, or until his successor is confirmed and qualified. He is filling the position of Chris Grissom on that utility board. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to approve Rhett on the utility board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. Resolution number R-135-23 is approved. At this time, we have a presentation from Chris Meazing.
I was asked, wrong one? Go ahead, keep it on. Asked to provide an update this evening on the capital improvement projects that occurred this past year. And so we've got a few slides for you that highlight those projects and give you a snapshot of, of some of the many things, exciting projects that were completed this past year. There's a fair number of slides here, so I won't read through each of them, but each slide is formatted the same. You'll see the name of the project at the, the top, and a quick description of the scope, the date it was completed, and the total cost for the project in the narrative to the right. So this was the O2I, the Ohio to Indiana Trail Bridge, which, as you know, the deck was deteriorated and in need of repair, so we were able to, after a long wait, find a contractor who could make the repairs necessary and get that back open for the public. Along those same lines, we built the new Atomic City Bridge at Good Rich Giles Park, which was opened in October, which creates the link between the trail on the east side to the west side of the river, south of the former power plant. And this eliminates the old utility bridge that was being used as the crossing, which was far less than adequate for that purpose. The Parks Department successfully paved a number of the parking lots within the Parks inventory. There was also an improvement at the concession stand at Pitsenberger Sports Complex. There were some improvements made to the golf course, which included paving the cart paths on the front nine, and also repairing some of the drainage on the front nine. The salt barn, as you recall, was in poor condition and in need of replacement, so the new salt barn structure was constructed at the Public Works Facility. That was just completed in December. And the power system, the number eight and number nine gas turbine controls were upgraded, which is a pretty substantial project if you consider the size and scale of those turbines and what it takes to make sure they operate effectively. It's an important part of the maintenance of, of those assets. Same thing with the modernization of substation number three. And the ongoing effort to, to modernize our streetlights and replace them with LED lights to improve the light quality and, and the longevity of those, those fixtures. Of course, the UBO Department was successful in converting from the CIS system to the NISC software, which has been a, a huge improvement in terms of the customer interface side that it provides and quality of customer service that it affords our citizens. The main street and Market Street intersection improvements, we were able to reverse the flow of Market Street, thereby eliminating the left turn onto Main Street, and in the process eliminate the median with the planters and the delineators. Block nine park improvements, as you all well know, is well underway. That will be, it's targeted to be completed end of May of next year, provided all the lead times on materials and such fall into place. But things seem to be moving very well. We'll see what kind of pause we have this winter because of the weather, but so far things are going very well, and the contractor's making great progress. We were able to complete Phase One of the downtown tree replacements, as you all know. We, we heard from many of the downtown merchants and constituents in the community about the overgrown trees and the conditions they were creating, so it was, it was very much time to, to replace those trees. So we did the first phase, which was Main Street from the O2I Trail to the north end of the downtown. Future years, we'll be doing the side streets and replacing those trees as well. The Wrecker Road Improvement Project, which is incidental to the Ascend Dispensary being built on East Ash Street, they're extending water and sewer, which will be a nice addition to the public infrastructure, which will make the four acres to the south also that much more attractive for development. Lincoln Street Water Main Replacement Project was completed with oversight by our engineering department. We were able to upgrade the water main in that street, which was hardly a main, it was more of a long service line, and the pressures were inadequate, and it had been in poor condition for some time, so we were able to get that project completed this year. Also, the pavement preservation program. We invested over $1.3 million in resurfacing, cape sealing, crack sealing, and making other repairs to, to the pavement conditions to prolong the life of our existing pavement surfaces and, and try to get the best ride quality that we can in the most economical fashion. Part of that project, too, is the replacement of curb ramps. As, as the streets are resurfaced, we look at each of the curb ramps at all the intersections to make sure they're in compliance with the ADA requirements. Manhole replacement project, hardly an exciting project, but important nonetheless. We had failing manhole structures, which if they cave in, then the sewers are blocked, and then they don't perform, and then that creates problems that we hear about. None of us want that. So we had 21 failing manholes that were replaced this, this year. The Arrowhead subdivision was completed by the developer who took on the project, which has resulted in now Arbor Homes, having 80 new lots to develop residential single-family units on. Kind of in the background, if, if you weren't aware of it, you might not even have noticed it was happening, but the Department of Energy this summer completed the demolition of the former Atomic Dome over by the wastewater treatment plant. That project is now complete, and there's just a small pile of rock there that now memorializes what was once in existence. The Regional Fire Training Center, the installation of the CONEX boxes, which provide opportunities for our fire safety personnel to be able to train for various events that they might encounter as it relates to firefighting. We had a Safe Route to School project that completed the installation of some school zone signs and other features to enhance the environment around our intermediate school and make things safer for the students walking to and from school. The water treatment plant maintenance building was erected this year. That gave the crews the space they need to be able to operate out of that location with their service equipment. We just recently completed the Fort Pickwa Plaza exterior lighting improvement. You'll recall when the building was first opened, there was exterior lighting accentuating the, the handsome architecture of the building, and, and that lighting had since failed, and so this is putting that lighting back into place and, and celebrating the character and beauty of that building. We did some upgrades to the water booster stations to make sure that the electrical components were up to current standards and, and functioning, functioning properly, so there wouldn't be any issues when, when those boosters need to perform. And that's it for 2023 in a, in a snapshot. 2024, some projects that you can anticipate seeing happen, you know, read through the entire list on the left is, are the projects that are fully funded with committed funding sources, be it local or through different funding sources at the state or federal level. On the right are the projects that are programmed but are dependent upon receipt of funding that we've identified and anticipate that we will receive, short of perhaps the Swift Run Damn Safety Project, which has got a little more uncertainty to it. But all the others, there's funding sources that if, if awarded, we'll be able to move forward with those projects. So everything from improvements to support the YMCA project, to replacing more trees downtown, sidewalk replacement program, upgrading some sewers, some curb extensions in the downtown, and of course, the pavement preservation program again this year. And that's it for the update on the capital improvement project. So you can see there was a lot of activity, a lot of investment in the community to maintain the infrastructure and continue to build upon the progress that's been made with previous projects and, and make Pickwa ready for business moving into the future years. Thank you.
Can you post this on the website?
We will. With, there's a, actually, we have our CIP plan out there. We'll post this along with the CIP, so you can see this presentation, or you can look at the, the capital improvement plan and see the projects in '23, '24, and future projects and how they're rated.
And some of those projects really are funded from multiple sources, not only from city cash. And so I think if we could somehow break that out a little bit so that citizens could see, you know, the project costs this, but this, this is private or, or grant funds, and the other is city funds?
Yeah. The, the CIP document actually goes into a fair amount of detail, best it was known at the time the document was assembled, but you're right, there's a lot of outside funding sources that are plugged into those projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving into old business. Ordinance number O-15-23, third reading.
An ordinance to make appropriations for the City of Pickwa for the year 2024.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission members. This is the third reading of the ordinance for the 2024 appropriations. There were no changes from the last reading, and passage of this ordinance will give the city legal authority to spend money as of January 1st.
Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Are there any questions or comments from our citizens?
I missed my opportunity, but I wanted to say I, I really appreciated the way we discussed the, the budget with the streamlined overview that we did for the, what, second reading maybe, or I guess maybe the first reading, but I thought that was really helpful, and I, I appreciated that effort that went into that. It was a lot of work.
Okay. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance number O-15-23.
Second.
All right. Will you call the roll, please? Diana?
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Okay. Ordinance number O-15-23 is approved. Ordinance number O-16-23, third reading.
An ordinance amending Chapter 94 of the Pickwa Code relating to the municipal golf course.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is the third reading. We've discussed this. We had the presentation from Patrick at the first reading, kind of giving you an update on where the golf course is at, how well they did this year. This would expand upon our efforts to make the golf course competitive, provide a, a good recreational opportunity in the community, and yet be as fiscally responsible as possible.
All right. Are there any questions or comments from commission? Are there any questions or comments from our citizens? I move that we adopt ordinance number O-16-23.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Mayor Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinz?
Aye.
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
All right. Ordinance number O-16-23 has been approved. Ordinance number O-17-23, third reading.
An ordinance repealing Schedule A of Chapter 33 of the Pickwa Code and adopting a new Schedule A of Chapter 33 of the Pickwa Code relating to wages of certain municipal employees.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is also our third reading for this ordinance. Schedule A covers our full-time employees for the City of Pickwa. These are non-bargaining unit employees. This schedule will adopt our cost of living adjustment, and certain classifications have been adjusted in salaries for efficiency of operations.
Are there any questions or comments from commission? Are there any questions or comments from our citizens? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance number O-17-23.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Mayor Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinz?
Aye.
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Ordinance number O-17-23 is approved. Ordinance number O-18-23, third reading.
An ordinance repealing Schedule A1 of Chapter 33 of the Pickwa Code and adopting a new Schedule A1 of Chapter 33 of the Pickwa Code relating to wages of certain municipal employees.
Thank you. A1 is our schedule that will incorporate our seasonal, part-time, and temporary employees. This schedule has been adjusted to reflect the, the state minimum wage requirements, and we've also adjusted in any cost of living adjustment that would be applied for active classifications on this wage schedule as well.
Any question from commissioners? Any questions from citizens? I move that we adopt ordinance number O-18-23.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Ordinance number O-18-23 is approved. Ordinance number O-19-23, third reading.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 32 of the Pickwa Code of ordinances.
Mayor, I move to amend ordinance O-19-23 by striking all of the altercations of, to Chapter 32, Section 001 in Exhibit A, and by striking the second "whereas" from the ordinance. This would have the effect of removing the merger of the Planning Commission and BZA while allowing the merging of the Parks and Trees Committee.
I'll second that.
All right. It's been, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinz?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
So at this time, would we need to?
Approve the amended.
Yeah.
The amended. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended merging the Tree Committee with the Parks only.
Is this to vote on to, or we're just approving the amendment to it?
We just did that.
Okay.
Just approved the amendment, so now it's to vote on?
To vote on.
Do we want to have any public comment or discussion on it? Okay.
Right. Is there any?
Do you?
I don't.
Anybody, any citizen want to comment?
Paul Simmons, 215 McKinley Avenue. So this means with your amendment, which I like, that the BZA and Planning Commissions are still gonna be?
Separate.
I love you guys. Merry Christmas.
So any other questions or comments? So at this time, we need a motion.
I will motion to approve ordinance O-19-23 as amended.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Vedder?
Aye.
Mayor Pearson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinz?
Aye.
Commissioner Homan?
Aye.
Okay. So we have approved the joining of the Park Board with the Tree Committee. That leaves the Planning Commission and the BZA. Are there comments or questions regarding that?
I would just encourage the BZA, it sounds like we're gonna start pulling from the pool of applicants to, to fill that board out. If that board is unable to meet quorum on a regular basis, I'm sure we will see this ordinance back up in front of the next commission.
So if you don't want it combined, please apply. We need as many volunteers as possible, you know, and, I mean, we've been having lack of quorums for some of these boards, which is why we can combine them, especially the Tree Committee, and that made sense to combine it with the Parks, but BZA and, and Planning Commission, we need them to be full as well, so please volunteer. need them to be full as well, so please volunteer.
Yeah, my personal opinion on it is that the BZA needs to remain separate. However, it needs to exist to remain separate. It can't just be a board that does not ever meet quorum.
We need some volunteers.
Welcome forward.
Paul Simmons, still two fifteen McKinley Avenue. When we were doing our onboarding for the commission for next year, there was a list of committees and commissions that need to have...
Volunteers.
Volunteer for, from the Commissioners. Was the BZA one of them? Do you know?
No.
I don't believe so.
Chris is saying no.
Chris is saying no.
There is no City Commission representative on the BZA.
Okay.
You could always attend.
Yeah, it's a public meeting. I think, yeah, you can just show up. I show up to some of the committee meetings I'm not on.
Yeah, I've been to Planning Commission as well, so...
I mean, just to, you know, in order, they need to have a quorum.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying.
See, I can show up, but...
But you're not a voting member.
You're not a voting member.
Yeah.
And we're not part of that.
Yep, all right.
But thanks, that's a good question.
Quick question, Alicia Lang. Who qualifies to apply for boards and things like this? Maybe the public is unaware if they're qualified. Maybe someone at home watching would want to apply, and they're like, oh, man, I don't think I qualify. Can you maybe elaborate on that for us?
You have to live in the city limits. I think you have, you have to live at your address for at least a year, or does that, yes?
Yes.
And...
Are you asking about background?
Yeah, and I think that's really it. I mean, a lot of times it helps, like if it's zoning, I mean, if it's somebody who has some background in that business, sometimes that helps. A lot of times resumes are uploaded. People are able to put up any type of information that they have about their profession.
So there's no, like, education requirements or any, anything like that? Is there an age requirement?
I don't think so. I, no, I don't think we can legally do that, to be honest with you.
I think, I think you have to be eighteen and up.
Oh, you have to be eighteen.
So eighteen and up, a resident for two years.
A year.
A year.
Yeah.
And you have to live inside the city.
Inside the city limits.
And that's it. Awesome, I hope we get some good candidates.
Me too.
And even if you don't want to apply for the board, again, those meetings are public. Encourage people to go there, and go to all the committee meetings, they're fun.
Okay, so as Commissioners were leaving that till the January, we're postponing it?
Well, it's dead and, I think it's dead and gone as an ordinance right now. The city is welcome to resubmit it next session.
All right. All right, moving on to new business, ordinance number O dash two zero dash twenty-three.
An emergency ordinance to make appropriation for the city of Pickwa, Ohio for the year 2023.
Commission members, this ordinance presents final changes to the 2023 budget, and we are asking that this be passed as an emergency ordinance since it must be, any adjustments must be approved by year end.
Mayor, I move that we waive the three reading rule for ordinance O dash two zero dash two-three.
I'll second that. And this is really just housekeeping, correct? This is housekeeping to make sure that we get things done tied up by the end of the year.
Yeah, just to bring the budget in line with what we've done and officially approve any budget changes that need to be made.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions regarding this ordinance? Citizen questions? I move that we adopt ordinance number O dash two zero dash twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Homan.
Aye.
Commissioner Heinz.
Aye.
Commissioner Lee.
Aye.
Mayor Pearson.
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder.
Aye.
Ordinance number O dash two zero dash twenty-three is approved. Resolution number R dash one three six dash twenty-three.
A resolution authorizing temporary loan of cash from the general fund to other funds for the fiscal year 2023.
These are loans that were temporarily made from the general fund to grant funds so that we could go ahead and make the expenditures while we were waiting for the grant funds to come in, and then they were paid back. This just officially proves that action.
So again, more housekeeping to clean things up at the end of the year.
Yes, just to put official approval on, on these transactions.
Any other questions or comments from Commission? Any questions or comments from our citizens? Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion, we approve resolution number R dash one thirty-six dash twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution number R dash one three six dash twenty-three is approved. Resolution number R dash one three seven dash twenty-three.
A resolution authorizing transfers of cash from general fund to the other funds for the fiscal year 2023.
This resolution approves transfers that were made from the general fund, and these transfers were approved by the Commission previously in the appropriations to approve the expenditures. However, transfers also have to be, the transfers themselves have to be approved, and that's what this does.
Any comments or questions from our Commissioners?
This one was to do with the Small Business Grant Fund and the Economic Development Fund, right?
Yes.
Do you have any estimates on ROI out of that, just out of curiosity?
Estimates of what?
Just what the return is for the city on that, like just from economic activity, tax revenue, job increase, anything like that?
I do not, I would have to look into that.
Any other questions or comments from Commission? Any questions or comments from our citizens? Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll move the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution number R dash one three seven dash twenty-three is approved. Resolution number R dash one three eight dash twenty-three.
A resolution authorizing temporary, temporary loan of cash from the general fund to other funds for the fiscal year 2024.
This is the same activity, just related to 2024, so we'll be making loans from the general fund to these grant funds while we're awaiting the revenue to come in from the grants themselves. So that way, that way we can move forward with expending money for the programs that these grant funds cover.
Are there questions or comments from Commission? Are there questions or comments from our citizens? Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion, we adopt or approve resolution number R dash one thirty-eight dash twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution number R dash one three eight dash twenty-three is approved. Resolution number R dash one three nine dash twenty-three.
A resolution authorizing transfers of cash from the general fund to the other funds for the fiscal year 2024.
And this resolution just provides authority to make those transfers to the other funds from the general. And this was also included in the 2024 appropriation, the actual expenditure, but this authorizes the transfers themselves.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution number R dash one three nine dash twenty-three is approved. I didn't skip one, did I? Resolution number R dash one four zero dash twenty-three.
A resolution authorizing the city's purchasing department to advertise for bids to make certain purchases for the, during the 2024 year.
This resolution is brought to the Commission every year because the city is required to advertise in a newspaper of local circulation whenever we bid contracts, so this just provides us the authority to advertise those bids.
Are there any questions from Commissioners? Are there any questions from our citizens?
I make a motion that the resolution R dash one four zero dash twenty-three be approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution number R dash one four zero dash twenty-three is adopted. Resolution number R dash one four one dash twenty-three.
A resolution authorizing a purchase order to Miami County Public Health for Public Health Services.
Good evening, Commissioners. If you'll recall, in 2022, the city joined with the other cities and townships and villages of Miami County to jointly provide public health services, and as such, we are now a member of the Miami County General Health District, and we are then obligated to pay our portion of the cost to provide those services. The Miami County Auditor provides the breakdown of costs to each of the entities in the district, and for 2024, the cost to the city will be just over $202,000. This particular resolution will authorize the city manager to issue a purchase order for that cost.
Did you have last year's cost?
I don't have the exact dollar figure, but it was, I want to say, twelve percent, nine or twelve percent increase over last year.
It was approximately $187,000.
Thank you, and that is, part of the cost is determined based on property valuations, which were adjusted, as we all know, this year, so that affected this as well.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from Commission? Are there citizen questions or comments? Is there a motion to adopt?
Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution R dash one four one dash two-three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution number R dash one four one dash twenty-three is approved. Resolution number R dash one four two dash twenty-three.
A resolution authorizing permission to conduct business with Lineage Lane LLC.
Commissioners, this evening we received a presentation from Michelle Perry in regards to the activities that her LLC that she is involved in is doing at Pitts and Barger Park. The next two resolutions deal with that business activity there. The first one here before you is noting that Michelle Perry is going to join us and be a City of Pickwa employee, and so this particular resolution is denoting that there could be a perceived conflict of interest from doing business with one of our own employees. The law director did review this. He drafted this resolution along with an affidavit for Ms. Perry to sign, that states we're all aware that she is a city employee, that there is no significant gain to her nor the city by entering into this agreement, and that this business activity was in place prior to her employment. So the law director didn't feel there was any need for concern. There are times when there is a conflict of interest or a perceived conflict, but as a small community, that comes up from time to time. The only thing that is required of the Commission is to denote that and understand that that could be an issue in which this resolution is recognizing that that is, in fact, in place.
How, how long is, I know we're not on that one yet, but how long is the lease agreement that we'll be voting on next for?
It's a one-year lease agreement, and then there is stipulation for renewals. Typically, what we do on a lease agreement is we allow for renewals as long as there is no issue or conflict with the lease requirements.
Would this kind of acknowledgement of a potential perceived conflict of interest, would this be reevaluated every time the lease is reevaluated?
It would.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions regarding this resolution? Citizen question or comments? Is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution R dash one four two dash two-three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution number R dash one four two dash twenty-three is approved. Resolution number R dash one four three dash twenty-three.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Lineage Lane LLC.
Commissioners, this is the lease agreement then that we would enter into. It is substantially the same as the lease agreement that we entered into last year. The stipulations are noted in the lease agreement that was provided for you, and as we just discussed, it's a one-year lease with the option for two renewals. There is a annual fee paid of $10, which covers the cost for usage of water at the facility.
Is the lease pricing that we gave kind of in line with other properties in the area?
Our other properties, for example, at Pitts and Barger Park, we lease, we have multiple leases at that facility with other, you know, with the sports leagues, and it is essentially the same lease agreement.
Are there any other questions from citizens? Commission? I move that we adopt resolution number R dash one four three dash twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution number R dash one four three dash twenty-three is approved. Resolution number R dash one four four dash twenty-three.
A resolution authorizing a 2024 purchase order to Patrick Staffing for temporary services for the City of Pickwa Sanitation Department.
Commissioners, the sanitation department utilizes temporary service help for the collection of our trash, recycling, and yard waste. We utilize those employees as collectors on our trucks. We've done this for a very long time. This purchase order, or this approval is necessary because the purchase order exceeds the dollar amount that requires Commission approval. We're asking for a purchase order be issued not to exceed $208,000 for the entire 2024 year.
What was it last year?
It was, it was $198,000 last year, or this year, 2023.
Are there any questions or comments from Commissioners?
I think in earlier conversations, I realized that it's not always easy to find people to, to man the trucks, and, and I think in, in the big picture of things, we'd like to see the trash picked up, and that takes people to do it, and that's, that's part of the process.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments from citizens?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution number R dash one four four dash twenty-three is approved. It is now time to move into public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the city commission on agenda items. Comments are requested to be limited to five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioner Jeff Lang, 9586 State Route 66. I want to thank Casey Heinz for your service as commissioner. Mayor Pearson, also the same to you. Thank you for your service. In all the activities over the last couple of months, I missed the opportunity to thank Lorna Swisher for her service at Main Street Pickwa. I have not yet met Jackie, her replacement, but I'm looking forward to working with her on activities as it relates to Main Street Pickwa. Ladies and gentlemen and department heads, the battery burning issue is not behind us, not behind you yet. I wanted to bring up something I just learned today that I wanted to share with you. This is from an email from Jason Simon, who is a Rapka representative, a field level-two agent, to our Chief of Fire, Chief Paul Snyder. Quote, "I am making you aware that Rapka has received three calls slash complaints about the ion burning of fire training research being done at 9300 North State Route 66, Pickwa, Ohio. I explain that the Pickwa FD applied for and received state open burning permission at this site from Rapka and the Ohio EPA that allows the burning of lithium-ion batteries on a small scale in a lab setting. I am making you aware of these calls, complaints, because it is generating, gaining some social media attention. Please make sure everyone is aware of this and being conscientious about what they are doing. Smoke and odors from this process should be greatly reduced or eliminated whenever and wherever possible. Feel free to contact me if you wish to discuss." This email from Mr. Simon to Chief Paul Snyder was sent on September 6th at 1:35 PM. Couple of questions I have about it is what in this email, quote, "small scale in a lab setting", has anything to do with a 40,000-pound marine battery lit up by ESRG on July 27th and lit and burned for almost 24 hours? This is the battery that generated the smoke and the odors that caused Hampshire Cabinets to evacuate its employees that morning. It's my understanding that in the air polluter must meet EPA de minimis limits. It's a Latin term. De minimis limits per specific periodic elements are no more than 10 pounds per 24 hours. A de minimis air contaminant source is one that emits less than this. In my research on the internet and also through Ohio EPA's determination from ESRG, Nick Warner, burned 11,227 pounds of batteries in 21 alone. Research on lithium-ion batteries says there are about 7% lithium, 7% cobalt, 5% nickel, or 4% nickel, 5% manganese, 10% copper, 15% aluminum, and 16% graphite. If I am boring you all, I'm sorry, but I am a Bachelor of Science graduate from Miami University in Chemistry, in case you didn't know that. Multiplying this out towards the weight of batteries in 21 alone means it was 561 pounds of manganese, 449 pounds of nickel, 786 pounds of lithium and cobalt, 1,684 pounds of aluminum, and 1,796 pounds of graphite, which is a carrier for a lot of these chemistries within these batteries. I also wanted to bring up that there was concerns brought up by commissioners and the city manager back on September 19th commission meeting that no one knew of the nuisance complaints from the citizens of Pickwa until the meeting of September 19th. And that's not true because the email I just read from Mr. Simon to Chief Paul Snyder was dated September 6th, and it was copied to our city manager and Chief Paul Snyder. It was sent to him. So my question is, is it was brought up before the 19th? And if you all remember, I did stand up here on the 19th and say that on June 6th of 2022, I brought it up in front of commission when Chief Paul Snyder was sitting right over there, and the motion was brought up in front of the commissioners to approve acceptance of a $400,000 grant check from BG SU Fire Prevention for a fire tower to be training at the same site. Right after he was done speaking and you approved it all, I got up and addressed Chief Paul Snyder and said, "Chief, I hope you do a better job with the burn tower than you do with the burning." That's when I brought up, and some of you are here in attendance, when I brought up the blue haze over Swift Run Lake. That blue haze matched the same blue color coming off that burn site. So in ending all of this, from my perspective, I'm going to let the Ohio EPA decide what ESRG needs to pay as far as fines. I let all these organizations, the city, the city manager, the fire chief, and everybody point their fingers, everybody else, whoever they want to do. All I ask is that someone put something in place that it doesn't happen again.
Yep.
Amen.
I'm with you.
It doesn't happen again.
All right. Thank you.
If you have a lease and you have someone coming onto a piece of city property, someone needs to be out there daily checking what they're doing.
Yep.
There also has to be a facility use agreement, an FUA. I don't know whether Bowling Green had one or ESRG had one there, especially in 18, 19, or 20. But if you have dealings with BG SU Fire Prevention, or Benson Firefighting, or ESRG, you up there and the department head need to make sure this doesn't happen again.
All right.
Thank you, Jeff. We appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All these pollutions go all around the world.
No, I'm with you.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you.
No, I appreciate you.
Alyssa Ling, and I'm glad that Jeff brought up the FUA. That is what I'd like to talk about. So I brought up at the last meeting. There was, if you look on the 2018 MOU at, on line 11, let me just go ahead and I can read it to you. Let's see. The, um, line 11 says, "The parties agree that prior to each use of the training center by BG SU, they shall enter into a facility use agreement, the FUA. BG SU understands and agrees that other parties will have the right to use the training center, accept the testing facility pursuant to similar facility use agreements. These parties agree that BG SU, as a service provider for DN VGL, will hold exclusive rights to the testing facility for three years." So I, I asked the law director for a copy of the FUA. Okay? Because it says there needs to be one for anyone to step foot on the property out there, right? Like, to utilize the facility. I'm not an attorney, so I'd like this answer. If all of you or one of you or some of you could please let me know. I can't find the FUA, any FUA from 2018. I asked the law director. They're, he can't seem to find one at this point. I was told by him to, you know, BG SU probably has those on file. Okay? So I called BG SU Fire School today. They don't have any either. In fact, I was told that they don't have any FUAs. I asked about contracts that they may have with Nick Warner and how this went from fire training to burning batteries. I stated that Nick said he was operating underneath the 2018 MOU. I believe he stated that here on September 5th, 2023, in a commission meeting. She told me that BG SU has no agreement with Nick to do that. So if there isn't an FUA for 2018, how was he able to even be out there burning? There's no contract. So that's what I'd like to know. How did this happen? She believes that Nick came from DN VGL. So did we have an agreement with DN VGL? Does anyone know? Can someone find out for me? Paul, could you please look into that?
I certainly will.
Thank you. Also spoke with the Ohio Department of Higher Education. I've been in communication with them for quite some time. They've expedited my concerns. They're going to be rewriting the MOU. But see, I'm concerned because, and they're going to be giving that to you at the first of the year, I guess.
That's correct. They're, they're revising the joint use agreement currently, and it's going to be in front of the commission at the beginning of next year.
Okay. So yeah, they, they told me that. My, my concern with that, and I, I truly, I'm, I'm asking you to all, I don't know who will be involved, whomever is involved with that. I think that, um, I, I'm against any burning out there, period, because I feel like the whole firefighter situation and BG SU is why we're here today, why I'm here. So I feel like, mm-mm, you know, that bridge has been burned, you know? However, I do think that there needs to be something in writing that states, because currently, the curriculum for state fire schools, they don't, it's not, they don't mandate that you have the lithium-ion battery training for firefighters. However, we all know that electric cars are coming, you know? So we would be naive to think that in the future, firefighters wouldn't utilize that. Okay? So what I'm asking is, number one, don't do the burns out there, period. I don't care what kind of burns. We have a Source Water Protection Act. We shouldn't be doing that out there anyway. Think about Hampshire Cabinets. Gives me PTSD just thinking about it. So I am concerned. I think that it needs to be spelled out that no matter what in the future, there will be no battery testing, no energy storage, anything out there, no solar panels, no nuclear. I can only think of maybe three reasons why this, this happened. One, malicious intent. Two, money. Three, ignorance. None of those are qualities that any of our leaders in this city should have. I joined some small groups.
Alyssa, your time is up.
Okay. I joined some small groups on Facebook. It seems that we have quite a few parallels with East Palestine and the lack of support from the EPA. So I, I certainly hope the EPA is held accountable.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alyssa, to your point about he, how I was allowed to do that, he clearly wasn't at the end there. That's why it was shut down so quickly. I, I think that's self-evident that he wasn't allowed to do that because...
But who was to oversee that? I mean, there's all kinds of...
My, my next, my next point is, what do we do to try to make sure something like this doesn't happen again? And that's, that's to you as well. I, I think that next year, early in the year, I think the city needs to do kind of a risk assessment, see if we have any other kind of ticking time bombs like this somewhere that
Agreed.
maybe we just needed to go take a quick, it, it, I mean, with this, it sounds like it would have been as simple as somebody walking down there and taking a look at it. Clearly, it happened quickly.
You would think that, but all of the emails, I mean, the plethora of emails and all of the communications, I mean, you know, and then to, I would, I would think if I was a law director, you know, and I'm looking at 2021 renewing this MOU, right? I would want to look at the 2018 to see what was stated. I would want to see the facility use agreement. I would want to see the dollar amounts. They had nothing to go off, so I mean...
Probably during our risk assessment, maybe we can reevaluate the protocols around reevaluating those agreements.
I'm disappointed with you, Paul. I feel like you let us down. I feel like when...
Alyssa. Please have a seat. Thank you.
You needed to read the material before you made decisions for our community.
Anyone else?
Debbie Stein, 1810 Carroll Drive. First, I'd like to thank Commissioner Heinz and Commissioner Pearson for their service to the community. Truly appreciate everything that you've done. I know this has been a very tough year, a hard year. I can see it on your faces, but you can feel it on ours as well. I've been reading a, a lot of the emails. And something that really touched me was one that Mr. Oberdorfer sent to Nick Warner. And that particular email, he said he entertained the idea of providing, helping him provide social media, update social media, do a sign, I guess maybe that sign would have said, "Burns taking place," or whatever, and on Friday, "Go Pickwa," you know, which is pretty ludicrous in my mind. If you read this email, "Help do asphalt." So what other companies are you going to help do this for? That was a company. That was not a city department.
So the site belonged to us, and the improvements we made there are still there. So the asphalt, it was basically a gravel drive. The police training center is next door. And because we had people from across the, the world that came to do, witnessed the tests, we did improvements there as part of economic development.
Social media?
The piece that gets lost, please let me finish. Thank you. And so part of that, and aside from ESRG, there was another firm here that night that was proposing to have a maintenance facility there for EV maintenance. And they were going to conduct two trainings per month that were a week long throughout the year. And that would be for Chrysler, Domler, Mercedes-Benz. And so that was an initiative that was, aside from what was, what was taking place with the ESRG. So those improvements were put in place for a myriad of reasons.
Yeah. I, I've not seen any contracts of such, but you don't help other companies enhance their social media. This is not what a city entity does. They don't reach out to the businesses. We all know, we've all got family, friends. I know every, pretty much every business in town. Have you reached out to them to put signage out, do social media?
No, the, the social media and the signage was to assist people to understand what was going on when they were testing.
It's their business. It's not the city's business. It's their business.
They were conducting business on city property.
Yeah, well, all along throughout this, the thing is, there were emails back and forth, and there was a neglect. Nobody was overseeing this. We talked about it 125 times. But it all boils down to who was watching everything that was going on out there. And nobody wants to take the blame. And so for all these months, it's, it's repetitious. You know, I, I don't want to keep reiterating, but there should have been somebody there that was overseeing this stuff. There should have been people that was, that were overseeing planning and zoning when information was supposed to go out to businesses, to citizens. That didn't happen. So we had the fiasco at Indian Ridge. We've had the fiasco out here on 25A. We've had a fiasco on Nicklin Avenue. And we've had lithium-ion burns. It's just been continuous, and nobody's watching it. We're not, you take an oath to protect our city, to help us. If you're going to help one business do signage and social media, then you help them all. You help, you help everyone. And I, I only got a few more minutes, but Mopar, what's happening? What, what's going on there?
With the power project?
Yeah.
I requested an update from them.
I, I actually sit on the board at the power project, and a lot of it has been, we have had a meeting recently. There's a lot of things we're still working out. And Paul, you may be able to, with, or Amy, I guess, with working out some of the particulars in order to get things started. So I think that's kind of where things are. And I think there's some more money that needs to be raised by the power project before we can move forward.
I mean, there's not been anything, any construction or, I mean, this has been over a year.
And that's, that's part, and again, I just recently came on the board of the power project, but that's part of my understanding is that's what Rebecca and through Compassion Network have been working with the city, trying to figure out and, and to get things in place before they do it, so.
Well, you know, and I know my, my time is up, but when, when they received that award, they said they were going to start on this immediately. You know, they held their, signed up their money, their dollar amount, and we've not seen anything for the kids and students.
Why, they asked for an update.
So what I'm, I'm saying over and over, nobody is watching anything. Nothing has been watched. In the past two years, I've seen our Indian Ridge, that was, our own zoning plan, our own comprehensive plan states that that backing up an Indian Ridge was supposed to be housing. And now it's light industrial. You know how disappointed those people are out there? I know you know... I know you know, Paul, they're, they're disappointed. So, we've not been watching what we are supposed to do in this town. Thank you.
Okay.
We're gonna watch, and thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Diana Park, Brunson Lane. Last week, the law director said that there was no restrictions on the size of batteries, and just like Jeff Lang had mentioned, there was. It was small, so I want that corrected. He also said that there was more small burns than the majority of burns. This has been going on for five months now, and I don't know why, some of you don't have the information, but there was 27 small burns in 39 medium, large, extra-large. So, small burns for 23 was 81 pounds, the medium was a couple thousand pounds, large was 60-some thousand pounds, extra-large went into 100-and-some thousand pounds. That doesn't sound like mostly, mostly small, and that's, that's just really unacceptable. But we keep on saying about Energy Storage Research Group, I've found over 30 companies, and in the Planning, Planning Commission, Matt Bowman was given a lease as an end user, and he even tells everybody that there is so many agencies that use this site. So, everybody got to go play and blow up batteries out there, and nobody's overseeing it, but yet, from '21, you've been, you know, it's been brought up in the commission meeting. There's emails saying there were large items out there. So, there's no excuse about this. I wanna go to the MOU in 2018. There was an MOU with Bowling Green, then in '21, we have a joint use agreement, and that's it. They mentioned, in 2018, there's an MOU. Then we get to '22 with the burn building, and in '22, it says, "Research, testing, and safety training has been conducted at the site since 2017." Again, it's saying that you, that there was burning and testing going on, all in 2017. But then it says, "The city of Pickwa has a commission-approved July 20, 2021 MOU and joint usage agreement." Isn't that confusing? Because in '21, I even watched the commission meeting, it was never brought up to you guys, never. You even said at one time, "I thought Bowling Green was done." Now, I understand why you guys seemed a little bit, you've been thrown under the bus. You knew about some of it, but yet, you didn't know about the MOU, you didn't know about the joint use agreement, so...
What are the F-U-S?
That stinks for you guys. And do you understand why the people came after you? Because it says that you approved it.
That's why I would like to have a risk review next year.
Oh, this is really bad. This is bad, because that shouldn't have ever taken place, and this is what scares us for everything going on. Then the zoning, the zoning was changed in 2018. It went to light industry. Industrial. How is that light industrial? So, Mr. Sneezy, how is that light industrial? Because there's smoke, there's fumes, there's 40,000-pound lithium ion batteries, businesses being closed down, where's Aaron when you need him? Because you guys were violating it.
I'd have to go back and look and see when, if the zoning was changed, because I don't recall that.
It was changed in 2018, right after you did the MOU, the next resolution was to change the zoning.
If I can finish my comment, if, if it was...
Oh, I'm, I'm helping you out.
So, what I would tell you is that the water treatment plant is a light industrial-type activity, so my recollection is that the plant was already zoned light industrial.
No, it was open space.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not objecting to what you say happened, I just, I don't know, I'd have to go look.
I've got the paperwork with me, it's open space.
And I have paperwork too, but I don't have it with me, so I will go look.
I got it with me, but it was changed from open space. I'm saying, so why was that allowed all these years? That's nuts. You know, businesses aren't closed down over this, so there's a lot of people that need replaced on boards, a lot of things that need to change, because this shouldn't have never happened. And then, I got on to Rapka, and they show quality, what, for burning, what's healthy, good, unhealthy. So, I start looking at their burns. They burnt all day, 12,000 pounds. Dangerous, dangerous. Burn again, 12,000 pounds, all day. Do you see it in good at all, or moderate? No, it's in dangerous.
Diane, your time's up, I'm sorry.
Okay, one more.
Okay.
And then in June, these are all outdoor.
Thank you.
Oh, and the video of 2018 came up missing off the website, and no one knows where it is, from the first MOU in 2018.
From the commission meeting?
Yeah, yeah, and I've asked Diane for it, she couldn't find it. It's kind of crazy stuff that's going on, that doesn't make sense.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else comment?
You too, or anyone?
Greg Neves, West Green Street. Paul, you said last week that there was a loan taken out for the 1.85 million. What collateral were you using?
It's debt service, and so, the city's credit, the credit rating in the city for the loan was the establishment of the credit, and the cash available in the general fund is repayment.
Well, if we gotta take a loan out for that, why are we hiring two people at $240,000 a year?
Well, simply because it's a development agreement, and so, everything's reimbursable, so we weren't expending our own cash, we're, we're basically just the intermediary to take control of the property, turn it back over, and it's at net zero cost to the city to redevelop that site.
When's it gonna be tore down?
We're working on that, I have a Miami County CIC, Community Investment Corporation, board meeting tomorrow, that they'll be discussing the 24 demolition, state demolition program, so that's one of the items on there.
Are we gonna be demolition, demoli, yeah, the water, water treatment plant too?
Yeah, so the water treatment plant is kind of a larger animal, and I wasn't here when it was decommissioned in, I believe it's 2017, or maybe 2016. I'll be working with the utility director on a plan, a long-range plan for that, but it's in the tens of millions of dollars to decommission that plan and to go ahead and remediate the site in terms of taking out the building and the tanks and everything. So, as we, once we clear the site in terms of the testing for the soils, then we're gonna start talking about the long-term status of that particular plant.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Adam Sees, 1853 West Parkway. Appreciate you guys' service, kind of will miss seeing you up here, but I don't think you'll miss me up here, at least for some of this stuff. I guess I'll talk about the battery burning, because I haven't yet. You know, I'm a business owner here locally, I run a carpet cleaning business, a lot of people know that. If, God forbid, I decided to dump my dirty carpet cleaning water in the middle of Main Street, believe me, I'm sure Aaron would come and find me, or the EPA, it's a $10,000 fine to do that. It is my responsibility to not do that. Liability is an important thing in business, I was a school bus driver for Pickwa City Schools, that's another thing, liability is important. I think you bring up a good point, there needs to be some kind of risk assessment. I agree with some of the citizens, I think you guys should pass some kind of ruling that no EV testing, no lithium ion battery burning ever happens within the city limits or on any city-owned property. I mean, that'd be a good way to, you know, "We're sorry that this happened, we're gonna do this to make sure it doesn't happen again," because I'm ready to move on to a lot of the positive things in this community, like the new lighting and some other things, but people make a good point, you know, we gotta put this behind us, so it's your guys' responsibility to make sure that that happens. Liability is really important for a small business, so I think it would be even more important for a community, something like that can't happen again. I mean, I'm not saying I trust the water sources, I know some people don't, but, you know, who's to say that in 20 years from now, somebody that walked down the bike path doesn't get cancer? And we all know what cancer can do, we don't want that. We need to make sure that this is a safe place for our people to be. So, next year, I look forward to you guys passing something, hopefully, that takes care of that, so I appreciate it. Again, appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? City managers report.
Good evening, Mayor.
Diane Park, what date was the commission?
1/16/18.
What was that?
1/16/18.
Thank you.
2018.
Yep. Yeah, I'd like to know where that went too, because that, that would have been on the YouTube channel, there should be a record as to if it was deleted or not, like...
It was there a month ago, and I went to review it, and it's missing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, whoever from, whoever's got the account number, or the account login from the city side, they should be able to pull the, it's called Google Takeout, but it should have the date of if that, when that video was uploaded and when it was deleted, or if it was.
So, that was just brought to my attention today, so we're looking into it. Again, I'd like to thank Commissioner Heinz and Mayor Pearson, you, you guys have really been a really good support group for, I think, the, the community in the sense that we've accomplished a lot of things over the last three years that I've been here. There's been a lot of hurdles to overcome, but I'm gonna talk about some really great things that have happened over the past year and 2023. When you look at the placemaking that's been taking place with Lock Nine Park, we're in the design for redevelopment and, and placemaking of the quads downtown, Artisan Alley will be in design this year. We're currently, you know, in the process of doing the low-head dam removal and stream interventions that should add a very nice feature to the community that not every community has. But moreover, the, the one thing that is kind of the capstone to all this is the city strategic plan, and that had four strategic outcome areas that were very critical, that we spent a lot of time between the public, the commission, and on a retreat with the staff to understand what that was, and what the community was looking for, and the first one was unified community is an outcome area. And so, one of the highlights for next year, going into 2024, is the community housing improvement program, and that'll be coordinating and securing and dispersing funds to support owner repair and rehab projects that meet program objectives. So, that'll be something that we'll be focusing on, and as we go through the beginning of the year, next year, as the, the departments start to put together their objectives and, and how they're going to respond to those four outcome areas, we'll start to put these together and bring them to the commission and the public. Area number two is responsive services, so responsive fire and EMS services is critical. So, we're revising legacy township fire contracts to cover department expenses for providing services to non-city residents and businesses. So, again, this is an initiative that has, on the, on the front end, revenue component, and on the back end, the expense of providing fire services and making sure that, at a minimum, it's a net neutral agreement. The third thing is a thriving economy, and that is promoting investment and development throughout, through placemaking, and in particular, Lock Nine this year, and as we go through next year, the design of the quads down on Main Street and Artisan Alley. So, we'll be bringing that before the commission and the public for charrettes on that. And lastly, we have reliable infrastructure, and that would be the pavement preservation program that Chris spoke about earlier, and it's inaugural year this year, and that's efficient and effective use of new technologies and resurfacing and pavement preservation to really stretch what we have in terms of our resources. One of the, one of the key things that you just recently approved was the investment policy for the city, and that, working with our investment partner, should allow the city to start to gain revenue that we missed out on the last 20 years. So, they looked, they did a projection that if the city had this in place and we had the investment policy and investments, we would have realized $12.8 million over the last 28 years that we didn't. So, that's, that's gonna be really critical as the city moves forward in this economic environment. We spoke about the Red Roof Inn briefly during public comment, but in terms of the city getting control of that property, and the demolition, early spring, we hope, of that particular eyesore, as we move forward, we're gonna see come out of the ground, you know, a national chain sit-down restaurant and a national chain hotel, as well as potentially an outlot development, and that'll really enhance our interchange and start to, I think, add a lot of synergy across the street with the Pickwa Center. As we go on this year, at the end of the year, over the last three years, we've done a lot of organizational development and operational efficiencies that reduced our expenditures and increased revenues. We've been talking about that throughout the night, and a lot of that just has to do with what's affordable, and, and really, how do we capture all the revenues that pay for the things that the community wants. We completed year two of the capital improvement program, and we've done that through the GIS or Geographical Information System, which, as time goes on and with the onboarding of a new community service director, we're really going to enhance the public's capability to get on the GIS map and click around on there and get all the information they need without trying to search files and, and do things like that. This year, we embarked on it, the first year of zero-based budgeting, and while it's not perfected yet, until we have our new financial software in place, as an organization, we have started to understand that we're going to budget for what's needed and not just budget plus 10% every year, which is typical for a lot of governments, maybe even more for the federal government. We've improved the city maintenance programs through coordinated annual department work plans, so again, if you look at the pavement preservation program, as we move forward, we'll have better programming between underground to make sure the utilities are in place, sidewalk replacements, trees, and then finally resurfacing at the appropriate time, so that we're not going out and digging up the road or digging on the side of the road after we do improvements. Of note, that's important in terms of revenue, over the Q1 through Q3 of this year compared to 2022, the city's realized $505,000 of income tax revenue that we had not previously received, and that is due in part to the collection efforts of RITA. And last on my list was, can, we are continuing to engage with ODNR and the dam and canal compliance initiatives, and so, we'll keep them placated as we move forward and find things that will meet whatever requirements they have. And the last thing I have, I wanted to end on a, on a high note at the end of the year, and give credit to Chris Schmiesing. The city just recently received a H2 Ohio Rivers Initiative grant for the low-head dam removal and modifications, and the anticipated grant amount of $1.5 million will cover the H2 Ohio, H2 Ohio Rivers Initiative, and it's in addition to the million dollars that we've already received to fund the low-head dam removal and, and stream intervention. So, that, that's one and a half times what we already have, and that was through the efforts and the relationships that, that Chris has, and so, we're gonna have an outstanding project in the river when it's done. I think the community will really enjoy starting to do recreation on the river that it's meant to do, you know, paddle boarding and kayaking, and so, the $1.5 million will go a long way in that. And I just wanted to end on a high note, because there are a lot of great things that happened this year, and next year, we anticipate many more, and I want to thank you all.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
Thank you. Commissioners comments? Commissioner Holman?
Merry Christmas, everybody, and everybody have safe travels, if you're traveling for the holidays, and that's, just stay warm, that's it.
Good man.
Commissioner Heinz?
Yeah, I just want to wish happy holidays to all of our citizens and those that work here in the city of Pickwa, so thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I want to thank you and KZ for your time on the commission, and all the stuff that you guys have done, all the ribbon cuttings, every public sessions that you've attended, all the time and effort that you've put into it, I appreciate it, and thank you very much for your time. And of course, Merry Christmas to everybody as well, and I also want to thank our clerks, Melissa and Diana, for doing all the SCUT work and revisions, and the times that we, we need stuff, they're there for us, and so, we appreciate you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
City manager's report was informative about the placemaking and getting Lock Nine done and then next the quads, but there are other public, private partnerships that could possibly be done out there as well. Maybe something that we could do with Layer Hamilton and maybe the African Jackson Cemetery. I'd like Alicia and Diane to, to help with some of that in the next year. We went to one meeting, let's have some more.
We are happy to join.
Well, I know, we talked about positive, you know, someone, Adam brought up the, you know, let's, let's positive. We definitely need to fix the stuff there at, at the water treatment plant. Whatever happened that was wrong needs to be corrected so it doesn't happen again. And then we can move forward and work on things that make Pickwa great. Pickwa's a great place to live. All you guys are here because you believe that. So let's plug you, let's plug you in to getting you to help keep and make this place. Yes, yes, just because you live on the outside don't mean that you can't help. So let's help, uh, let's help make it great and whatever it takes. If we have to have weekly meetings, people come in and voice and air their ideas, concerns, grievances, whatever, let's do that. Whatever it takes. We're listening to you guys, we're willing to do and act upon the things that you guys are saying. You're not going, you're not going unheard, you're being heard. So my plan for the new year is to, to work closer with people. Have them come in and, and we go out, whatever it takes to make, to continue the trend. Because Lock Nine looks great and it's going to be great. The quad, I'm, I'm skeptical on the designs, I, I just wait to see, we'll see what that is. But there are other things that we could do. I did want to ask a question about ADA compliance. That was, we had a, a commission meeting at, Valerie Mulliken talked about some of the intersections. That is being done as the streets were getting fixed as well. And, but I, I think that needs to be said so that people understand that. I mean, it is being done. There are some places and she, she pointed out, some of the parks may need some help and you're going to work on that, is that correct?
We are, and as the paving continues, the ramps will be brought up to, to the appropriate standard and we're also evaluating placement of handicap parking spaces within the public parking rooms to make sure that they're spaced properly.
Great. So my, my whole thing is, and I appreciate that, so thank you. Lots of, lots of big wins, like that grant that we got at the end of the year here. And we want people to come up and volunteer and, but come to meetings. And you can disagree and, and, and be disagreeable, but to a point. So let's, let's, let's work together though, okay? Because that's, that's what it's all about. I mean, we live in a community, we may not all agree on everything, but we, we can agree to work together to, you know, to see our differences and, and maybe split it down the middle or something, I don't know. Let's, but let's try. And so I'm willing to do what it takes. And I know the other commissioners and the newly elected ones are willing to do it as well. So I want everybody to have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I did one more thing. Dave McMillan called me and wanted to know what the cost of the lights were for the, it looks great. The lighting at the.
Seventeen thousand something, it was in our.
Was it 18,000?
Well, yeah, so the, the quote that I sent you was 18,245. It rang in at 17,000 and change.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, so I just wanted people to be aware. The city, or the.
It's, yeah, it's out, it's the lighting on the Fort Pickwa Plaza.
Fort Pickwa Plaza. So if you ask, I wanted to give, give that information out. So everybody have a great new year and I'm looking forward to serving, serving you all. That's it.
My wish is for the holiday season for everyone as well. I have a couple of notes. Number one, if you did not partake in the big Pickwa High School concert on Sunday, you missed a great opportunity. It was a wonderful concert and, and I think, again, sometimes we think that, that somehow all kids are bad and, and they're always doing ornery things. And, and there was a group of kids that really put on a great show and it was a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to, to show what, what Pickwa kids can do. So that was a good opportunity. A reminder that the, it's discussion about the Hans Pavilion is slated for kind of a, of fact-finding meeting on January the 18th. It'll be held at the Activity Center for the Pickwa YMCA at 7 o'clock. We'll have more information about that. And I think it's kind of the starting phase for, for us trying to gather information and see if we can come to some agreement. In my terms, it's a great opportunity for a shared, a shared public slash private collaborative. And some people will say that we don't know how to do those things. And, and my sense is, at least here's one example where we know how to do those things. The other thing is that I have been noted, I guess, in recent meetings for offering good citizenship comments. I, I heard a program on, on TV talking about concern over people who use fobs to enter and start their cars. And evidently there is some new technology has, that has put every, anyone who has a fob in some jeopardy. My understanding is that, and from the, from the chief, is that we have a thing called a Faraday bag and you can buy those at Walmart. And what you do is you pop your key fob in the Faraday bag and I think it shields the, the, the fob from being accessed from, I think the report I saw.
It doesn't transmit the signal.
Blocks the, blocks the signal. And evidently there is some research that says that signal can be identified from 150 feet. And so the question is, how many of us have fobs for our cars? And how many of us have the fob even in our own house that's 150 feet or less? I think we can probably go someplace either online or maybe a little local retail and, and buy a protection bag and it's one more opportunity to try to see if we can prevent other kinds of difficulties in the community. So I certainly would recommend that. So thank you very much, have a Happy New Year.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody, it's been a pleasure to serve this community. I want to remind you that you too can serve our community. I want to remind you that you can serve on many committees and boards, get involved, find out what's going on in our community. Pickwa's a great place to live, work and play. Thank you, and everybody have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
Seconded, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are adjourned.